Call the meeting to order. Welcome to the March 4th, 2025, Meeting of the Planning Board. First, we'll take a roll call to introduce board members and staff. Kate Ne.
Here.
Josh Ames.
Here.
Phil Giordano.
I'm here.
Sean Weller. You were muted, Sean.
Here, I was so confident I wasn't.
And I'm Ellen Rollings, I'm also here. We're also joined by Elijah Romulus, our town planner, Jess Cole, our recording secretary, and Jack Hatfield from Westwood Media Center. This meeting is recorded by Westwood Media Center and broadcast live on local cable television Comcast Channel 6 and Verizon Channel 42. Meetings are also live on the Western Media's YouTube channel. If you're interested in joining the meeting via Zoom, you can find the login directions in the Planning Board meeting notice that is posted to the calendar section of the town's webpage at HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash WWW dot Town Hall dot Westwood dot MA dot US forward slash. We will begin the meeting with only the board members and staff unmuted and on video. As the chair recognizes individuals to speak, we will unmute them. Board members may choose to mute themselves when they are not speaking in order to minimize background noise. For applications, the chair will first invite the applicant to address the board and give a presentation summarizing what is being requested. Board members receive the application materials prior to the meeting and will have reviewed them. Board members may ask questions during and following the presentation. Staff and outside experts will provide comments to the board. For agenda items that are not a public hearing, the opportunity for public comment will be at the discretion of the board chair. For agenda items that are for a public hearing, the public will be given an opportunity to comment after board discussion. Public comment will only be read or heard once the chair has opened the public comment period. The chair will ask for any final public comments before closing public comment. During public comment, attendees may use the raise hand feature to speak or type a question in the Q and A at the bottom of your screen. Attendees will be, will not be on video, but will be unmuted if called on during the public comment portion. To raise your hand, click on the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen and wait for the host to call on and unmute you. You may then click lower hand once you've been called on. For those participating by phone, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. Once unmuted, please identify yourself by stating your name and address for the record. Please direct all comments and questions to the chair and only have one person speaking at a time. Those making public comments will have three minutes to speak. All people will be given the opportunity to speak, but in the interest of time and fairness, repetitive or off-topic comments may be limited. Additionally, comments may be submitted by email or regular mail prior to the meeting. When we come to that part of the meeting, I will remind everyone of the process. Following the public comment portion, the board will deliberate and make a decision or continue the hearing to a specific future date. All remote meetings require that votes be taken by roll call. When a motion and second has been made, the chair will ask if there's any further discussion before proceeding to a roll call vote and will then restate the results of the vote. All right, Elijah, oh, and we are also joined by Nora Lockne, our Director of Community and Economic Development. Hi Nora. Um, all right, Elijah, do we have any changes to our agenda this evening?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair, there are two changes to the agenda. Uh, the first, um, the modification for Fox Hill Estates. Uh, that was a placeholder, the applicant, uh, has not, uh, put forth an application, so, uh, the board does not, uh, need to take that up, uh, if that is the purview of the board. Uh, and then as well as, um, the consideration, uh, for the A and R application for 361 Washington Street, the applicant, uh, has withdrawn their application and the board does not need to, uh, uh, take that up.
Great, thank you. So if I understand correctly, we, we need to take no action on Agenda Item One and can proceed to Item Number Two.
That is correct.
Fabulous, all right, then, the first topic of discussion this evening is Agenda Item Number Two. 25 Fox Meadow Drive, 300 Fox Hill Street. Consideration of Proposed Approval Not Required A and R Plan for 25 Fox Meadow Drive, 300 Fox Hill Street, continued from 2/11/25.
Yes, uh, so the applicant has, uh, requested a continuance, uh, waiver of time to, uh, continue working out the, uh, issues as it relates to, uh, the emergency easement on the, uh, plan, uh, properties that are, um, being proposed. And so, uh, they've asked a continuance to the, um, March 18th meeting.
All right, so, so yes, I see that we did get the waiver of time, so if someone, uh, any discussion on that, i- it sounds like not really, because we just need to continue it, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, um, then I would entertain a motion to continue if the board member was so inclined.
So moved?
I think it needs to be a little more specific.
I, I moved that the planning board accept the applicant's waiver of time pursuant to MGL Section 81P of Chapter 41 and continue the approval not required plan for 25 Fox Meadow Drive, 300 Fox Hill Street dated December 12th, 2024 and revised through February 4th, 2025 to Tuesday, March 18th, 2025.
I can. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll take roll call, Josh.
I.
Kate?
I.
Sean?
I.
Phil?
I.
I vote I as well, motion carries, that item is continued to March 18th. All right, and as we were told, item number three was withdrawn. We also, excuse me, we don't need, do we need to take any action of, on that? Or is their intention to withdraw enough?
Their intention to withdraw is enough.
All right, fabulous, sorry, I'm turning pages here. And our next agenda item would be, uh, Agenda Item Number Four. Continuation of our public hearing for zoning bylaw, zoning map, and general bylaw amendment articles for the May 2025 Annual Town Meeting, continued from February 11th, 2025, including, actually, we continued, that, that's actually continued from February 25th, 2025, including Article PB1, Amendments to Accessory Apartments, Article PB2, Amendments to Affordable Housing, Article PB3, Amendments to Underlying Zoning District Designation of Parcel on Providence Highway, Article PB4, Amendments to Mixed Use Multi-Family Residential Overlay District, Article PB5, Amendments to Administrative Office Research ARO Zoning District, Article PB6, Housekeeping Amendments, and Article PB7, Amendments to Major Business Development, MVB. All right, so I'm happy to hand the floor over to town staff to fill us in on any changes, any information we should have before we continue our discussion of these articles.
Uh, yes, so, uh, we had the meeting, uh, as you had referenced, with, jointly with the FinCom last week on, uh, Tuesday, the 25th. Uh, since then, um, there have been no major changes to the, um, proposed amendments. And so, um, uh, I would suggest, uh, that this time be, um, you know, for the board to, uh, debrief from last meeting and, uh, uh, consider anything, uh, going forward.
Thank you. All right, um, then I think at this time I'd open it up to board member questions, comments. We have Nora and Elijah here to help guide us. And then after we've discussed, I can open up the floor to public participation. So, um, board members, does anyone have any, uh, should we just, should we kind of go through each article rather than, even though there's no changes, I'll start with, does anyone want to discuss anything having to do with article, proposed Article One, Amendments to Accessory Apartments? Okay, and you know what, in keeping with the way we've been doing it, I think I'll, I'll just open for public participation after each article unless anyone has an objection to that. All right, um, any questions, comments from board members or input from staff on proposed Article One, Amendments to Accessory Apartments? I'm not seeing any, all right, I'll open up the floor for public participation for questions, comments, thoughts on proposed Article One, Amendments to Accessory Apartments. Please raise your hand or enter your question in the Q and A and just please make sure you include your full name and address. I'm not seeing any hands or any questions. And if something pops up in the Q and A, we can always look back to it. Uh, in the meantime, let's move on to proposed Article Two, Amendments to Affordable Housing. Is there anything, any board members would like to comment or discuss about proposed Article Two?
Unf.
This might be a very quick meeting. All right, yeah. Uh, all right, then.
I see Sean and Kate both clapping.
I know. It would not be a bad thing, um, all right, then I'll open up the floor for public comment or participation on proposed Article Two, Amendments to Affordable Housing. Please either raise your hand or enter a question or comment into the Q and A. Full name and address for the record, please. All right, I'm not seeing anything specifically for that one. Then I'll move on to proposed Article Three, Amendments to Underlying Zoning District Designation of Parcel on Providence Highway. That is the Lambert's Plaza. Any board members have any, anything they'd like to discuss at this time about that article? All right, uh, then I would entertain public participation. Anyone who has questions or comments about proposed Article Three, please raise your hand or enter your question or comment in the Q and A section of the Zoom application. All right, um, not seeing anything, so at this time, uh, we'll move on to proposed Article Four, Amendments to Mixed Use Multi-Family Residential Overlay District. Any questions or comments from board members on proposed Article Four at this time? I actually just have one quick question on this. Do we have any, Nora, Elijah, have we gotten any further guidance from the state on this? Are we still fairly confident that this is still just a placeholder and we will not need to do anything?
So we have not given any information on our, the status of our, our compliance application. I believe that the EOHLC is slowly going through them, um, and they have not indicated when they would respond. I think it's highly unlikely that they'll respond in time for you to make changes to, to, to actually put something into this article, but you do still have your next meeting on March 18th as the one last chance you'd have to do that. So I'd recommend you just keep this open as a placeholder in case, um, I, I think we'll end up asking to just remove it, but.
No, that's helpful. I figured, you know, no news was good news, but I always like to check in, so that is helpful. Thank you. Uh, any other board member questions or comments on proposed Article Four on the Mumford placeholder article? All right, then I will open up the floor for public participation on proposed Article Four, Amendments to Mixed Use Multi-Family Residential Overlay District. Please raise your hand or enter a question in the Q and A. I'm not seeing anything for proposed Article Four. Then I will move on to proposed Article Five, Amendments to Administrative Office Research ARO Zoning District. Any questions, comments, discussion from board members on proposed Article Five at this time? Sean?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, given that this was the article that I think has generated some of the most public comment to date in some of our recent meetings, I feel it's worth us marinating in it for a few minutes to see, um, if, if we've got any further thoughts on if there are ways to adjust this, um, to potentially address some of the public comments. In particular, I have been doing some review of the zoning bylaw myself, and it's 246 pages, I might have missed something in there. My understanding is, I, or I had, I had trouble actually finding information on kind of a pre-designated residential buffer built into the ARO zoning district. And I'm concerned that without kind of some sort of prescribed buffer in the zoning bylaw, I, I wouldn't want some sort of an adverse, uh, kind of development to come of this that, that wouldn't be respectful of, of, of the neighborhood to the west. So it's an area I wanted to explore and, and, and check the rest of the board's appetite on reopening some of the discussion on this. Um, and my biggest concern, I think, is buffers. How do we build buffer into this and maybe expand the buffer for a residential district to address some of the, uh, residential concerns? But I'm open to hearing other members' perspectives as well. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Kate, yes?
Yes, thank you, um. So, so my thoughts on this have not, uh, changed. We do not have a project in front of us to discuss, um, how, how to manage a, a project. So I think it would be premature to, to discuss a, a buffer zone if it's not already, um, addressed in, in the zoning. And I do appreciate the sensitivity to all of our neighbors in Westwood who are adjacent to, um, to business zones. So, so I, I'm not insensitive to that. But I think it's premature to, to discuss specifics of what a, or even very generally broadly, what a project may or may not be. That this is a business zone and we are looking at allowing a business in that zone. I'm, I'm, I'm happy to discuss, but, but not much has changed for me in my view of, of this project. It's, it's just allowing an additional use. And, um, we, we have a lot of folks in town who, who are neighbors to, um, industry of various sorts, so.
Thanks, Kate. Phil?
Uh, I actually, I'm gonna echo Kate. I think the board is more than capable of handling any application for something that might come through our doors. I think we're very sensitive to the needs and the considerations, but unless or, or until something happens, I'm not sure that we should be trying to establish something. So Kate or Kate said it, but I'm just gonna echo her concern.
Thanks, Phil. Any other board member comments, questions on that?
I, I guess I, I would just, Sean, since you're bringing it up, like, could you, like, is your real main push here is the, the implementation of a buffer zone? Is that really the, the crux of what you're saying? Or like, how can we refine the, the conversation? If, if, I feel like pretty broad right now, I don't know what we're actually discussing.
Yeah, so let, I'll, let me try to narrow it in a little more. And I'll, I'll defer to Elijah and Nora if I say anything not factually correct about parts of the zoning bylaw you're aware of. For certain other types of districts in town, I think the by, like, the industrial district, the bylaw lays out that there's gotta be a minimum, I, I can't remember the exact distance, but there's gotta be a minimum buffer between there and residential areas. Um, and, and there's sort of a similar prescription for, say, the University Avenue, uh, district, I believe, the overlay district there. I believe there's a prescription that there's gotta be a hundred-foot buffer from those covered in that overlay to, um, or, or in the University Avenue Mixed Use Development, hundred-foot buffer between those areas and kind of residential areas. I might be wrong on some of these, this was, I was trying to do kind of my read and research before I get into this. Um, and then even in the FMUOD, uh, districts. And remember, we're bringing this bylaw as an amendment to the ARO district and not to the flexible mixed-use overlay district. Um, in the FMUOD guidelines, there are some alternative dimensional requirements that also include for FMUOD District Five, for example, a 50-foot buffer, uh, to residential areas. My concern is that, you know, those are kind of similar types of developments to me, FMUOD developments, uh, University Avenue or mixed-use developments, or, sorry, the University Avenue Overlay District. And, uh, industrial is kind of a, uh, probably an even more intensive use, but it does represent sort of something more commercially focused as opposed to residentially focused. In each of those cases, and Highway Business District as well, all of those cases, the zoning bylaw prescribes a certain minimum buffer to residential areas that I could not find prescribed to the Administrative Research Office area in the bylaw. And if we're adding hotel as a use to the ARO area, which is going to be, you know, I, I don't wanna call it a more intensive use, but it has likelihood for use at, say, later hours of the day, for example. Would we want to add in a similar type of buffer as might exist? A zone, zoning bylaw prescribed buffer as might exist for the industrial area, for the University Avenue area, for other, you know, for the flexible mixed-use overlay district areas, et cetera. I'm not sure I've articulated that super well, I hope that's somewhat clear, but it's just a concern I wanted to raise, um, because I felt it was appropriate, given some of the public comment.
So I, I can respond to that, that the zoning bylaw has a section, Section 6.3, that includes provisions for screening, for enclosures, and for buffers in certain districts. Industrial district, industrial office, I believe, um, highway business and local business. Only where those, where projects in those districts abut or is within a certain distance of a residential property. It does not have any buffers required in the ARO district, nor in any residential district, nor in the general residential or special residential districts. That's how the bylaw has been written. If the planning board would like to see an amendment to Section 6.3, the board can propose that at an, at a future town meeting. The article that you're discussing tonight was advertised as a, a opportunity for the board to consider amendments either to the FMUOD uses or to the ARO uses, uses, just the uses. There was not, um, it was not advertised to have you look at dimensional requirements or any other changes. So it's changes to the principal use table or, as you had previously discussed, changes to the FMUOD district. So that wouldn't be before you tonight as part of this article. Um, that said, what you have proposed so far were changes that adjust the nature of, uh, nursing home or convalescent home and assisted living residence, and then add motel or hotel. And all of those options, the, um, the uses that come under that, whether to nursing or convalescent home, an assisted living residence, or a motel or hotel, they are all special permit uses, only allowable if a special permit is granted by the zoning board of appeals. And those are discretionary special permits, where the zoning board of appeals would have the opportunity to impose a buffer if it chose to. So if you look at some developments that have already taken place in the ARO, at 131 E Street, we have the, um, Meditech property, and that was developed. It was not developed as a special permit use, that was a by right use and would still be a by right use if another, uh, office building chose to locate there. But if that was converted to something that was a special permit use, it would go to the ZBA. Um, and if we look at the other ARO zone, we have Meditech office buildings there too that were, uh, that were developed as a by right use. But we also have Fox Hill Village and the White Oak Cottages, which were developed as special permit uses. And those special permit uses were under a section of the bylaw, residential retirement community that did require a buffer. So it all depends on the type of use, it all depends on, uh, whether it's special permit or by right. And if it is special permit, the zoning board has the opportunity to impose any restrictions that they think are appropriate to the development. So these three uses that are the, the, um, that are being affected by the, the Warren article that you're writing already have the ability for buffers to be imposed, but they don't have the requirement. If you wanted to make a requirement that buffers apply in all ARO developments, then that's an amendment to Section 6.3, that would have to be done at a, at a later town meeting.
And thank you for the clarification.
Yes, thank you, that is helpful. Josh, you, was your hand still up from before, or did you have something that, okay? And that Kate, I'm sorry.
Uh, I'll have a follow-on, but Kate, Kate, go ahead, I don't wanna monopolize time.
No worries.
Thanks, Josh, so I'll speak for a second time, thanks, Josh. I'm monopolizing myself. I, I did just wanna say, I, I really do, I, I appreciate, I, what I believe is the sentiment behind the suggestion, but my experience on this board is when we get a project in front of us, we are ensuring that there's excellent communication with the abutters. We are doing everything that we can on a project-by-project basis to have it be as positive for everyone involved as possible. And, and I, I feel like I just wanna come back to, this feels similar to me about the, you know, talking about the design, um, of the town centers that we were going for. It's like, what are we, what, where are we becoming enforcers of something? Or where are we making it possible for people to be creative with the properties that they own? How are we allowing property owners to, to create what they, what they want, you know, in balance with what is good for the community in the town of Westwood? Whether it's, you know, whatever that might be. I, I just, that's the caution that I would, um, that I would add to the discussion, you know, um, although I appreciate the sentiment, thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Josh, back to you.
Yeah, so, um, again, Nora, I think that was really useful, um, to be put out there for people to understand that, like, this isn't just carte blanche for people to, to develop at willy-nilly. And, and Sean, to be fair, like, I understand the where the buffer might come into play and it might be valuable in some locations. I would see personally, you know, having, like, actually pretty deep knowledge of that area, the most concern there would be traffic and, you know, late night things like that, which a buffer wouldn't actually address in, in any meaningful way. So that's the other part of this, like, again, we're, we're sort of talking out of turn here and, and that, this will be my last comment, but like, uh, I'm very sensitive to where specific, um, developments will go. I think to Kate's point, like, as long as there's oversight there, um, I think that's the most important thing. Um, and obviously, if we wanted to do anything structurally around enforcing buffers and stuff like, to Nora's point, we're gonna have to change other sections. Like, what's, what we're describing right now is if we're allowing that hotel to be special permanent. Nora, please correct me if I'm talking out of my, um, other mouth. But, so I, I think there will still be that over, oversight, and it will still come to the ZBA and then potentially back to us, because I'm sure there'll be plenty of other, uh, indications um, that would require the planning board approval for the site plan or whatever else it may be. But again, that's just sort of my perspective, I'm comfortable with it, but I think that, that comfortable nature is because there's a number of layers of, um, oversight between the planning board and the ZBA, so.
Thank you. Any other thoughts from board members, Phil? Yes?
Um, I would just add from Nora's explanation, I think the, the use is the only thing advertised and therefore that's the only thing that's gonna be before us at this time. And if there's further indications, we would have to do it. So I think we're kind of, since, um, we're this far down the road and with the advertising, I think we have to just consider what we have, is what I gather.
Thank you, Phil. Sean, yes?
So thank you, Madam Chair. And what I'm hearing from my fellow board members is the appetite might not be there on the buffer question. This, this is more curiosity question for Elijah and Nora, not necessarily for this specific case, but for others generically like this going forward. If we've advertised, say, an issue like this as, as discussing amendments to the uses, can a restriction be put onto a use? For example, could we say hotel allowed by special permit if at least a hundred-foot buffer is provided to residential zones? And that's some kind of footnote that exists off the use table? Or would that be pushing beyond the bounds of what we've advertised something like this for?
No, I think that, I think that would be stepping aside from use and going into a dimensional requirement.
Okay, thank you. And, and we aren't doing such for, for kind of the nursing home situation? We aren't getting outside of use by talking about restrictions on beds per acres and things like that?
I don't believe we are, um, on those, what we're, we're not, we're not talking about the property, we're talking about the use. So the restrictions are on the use itself. The use has to be on an overall land mass. We can limit that as the use table in multiple cases has that. In fact, on the hotel or motel, it already says on five acres or more. So we're repeating that from other sections that are already in the use chart, but the use chart does not have, um, buffer requirements in it. We have a section of our bylaw dedicated. Uh, buffer requirements in it. We have a section of our by law dedicated to buffer requirements. So I think if you were trying to impose those within the use chart, you would be overstepping.
Okay. And may I ask one more question, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Again, I I think for. Directed towards staff for those with some more institutional knowledge than me. I'm, uh, you know, the way we 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 had a, I think a decently robust discussion a few meetings back about whether to approach this. Through the ARO route or through the FMUOD route. To me, the key difference is that the ARO route would have site plan review by the planning board, but the special permit would actually come from the zoning board of appeals. If a hotel use case were being pursued. And under the FMUOD route, all all of this is basically wrapped up into sort of a big FMUOD special permit with the planning board. I'm curious if if staff has any or or fellow board members have any assessment of whether. Either outcomes or, you know, kind of what comes of these processes tends to meaningfully differ. Whether it's a special permit before the zoning board of appeals or the planning board. I know that's kind of a hard question to answer because it totally depends on who's constituting each board, but. I'm just curious on that.
So my response to that is that the FMUOD special permit was developed to improve. Uh, predictability and efficiency of the permitting process by having a single board handle the review. So FMUOD special permits are through the planning board and any special permits related to the developments that are in an FMUOD. That would otherwise go the zoning board also go the planning board. So it's a one stop process. If it goes under a just a special permit to the zoning board of appeals, whether it's an ARO zone or any other zone in town. Then the planning board has its EIDR process, it's an environmental impact design review process, and the zoning board has its special permit process. And the two have to go hand in hand and the decisions of each board have to reference the decisions of the other. So it's a more complicated process. Whereas the FMUOD is more streamlined, one stop. And I will just mention that we had originally recommended that the board consider FMUOD. Overlay of this one property, um, because it is the same FMUOD, I believe it's FMUOD five. Overlays the property on the other side of the highway. Um, but I think that the board expressed some concern about the. Uses that are allowed in FMUOD five in addition to hotel that might not already be allowed in the ARO. And there were just a couple of uses that were uh, that differed between the two um, two means of zoning.
Thank you, Nora. You're the best. Um, in in to that that point like Sean, you know, that's where I feel a little bit, I won't say more comfort, but. It's not easy, um, in in so many words, like there's more board approvals with this sort of mixed. Like the ARO going to the special permit and then coming back to us. It's allowed, but there are still a lot of hoops to to jump through. That's why personally I'm a little bit more comfortable. I mean, we we specifically talked about. The FMUOD. Um, sort of multi-family component, everything like not being in a neighborhood and that's why, you know, we chose not to put it there. Um, so this still feels in line with, you know, that sort of intent, because again, it's not sort of a one stop shop. You can just do it whenever. It you still have to jump through a a number of hoops and there it's a much less um, streamlined process like Nora said, so. That's sort of where I'm coming from on it, um, and I I totally get some of the concerns that the neighborhood has. Um, and I think that we can suss that out and address that as boards as potential applicants come through. And we'll still continue to have this feedback loop, hopefully if everybody stays engaged.
Well, I.
Thank you.
Appreciate my fellow board members humoring my ideation. I am just trying to think creatively here. Given some of the public comment, I just, I wa- I want good outcomes from this, so. Uh, appreciate everyone's thoughts and and thanks for the discussion on what looks to be otherwise a fairly short meeting tonight.
Yes, I see that. Um, thank you. And and this is, you know, this is, this is the time to have this conversation. It it is helpful to understand that, because I'm I'm thinking, obviously not part of this scope. In the future, it might be worthwhile to look at that buffer section just to make sure that we are applying it consistently. Because I'm not sure the last time it was updated in some other zones. It might be worth looking at it and just deciding if we do want to make some changes to that. Obviously not as part of this cycle, but I I appreciate that being brought up. I don't think it's a bad thing to periodically review sections and whatever, but it is helpful to know that that's, that's just out of scope. For the article that we're bringing forward to town meeting this year. And I appreciate the discussion. So uh, any other questions, comments from board members? Otherwise, I'm happy to open that to public comment at this time for proposed article five. All right, I do see there's uh, two comments in the Q and A. Um, I do see, we have one. One, it sounds like um, Sandra Casteldini would like to speak. And then we have one that is um, typed out, so let's, let's um, take Sandra. And then we can uh, go back to the typed comment.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Sandra Casteldini, fifty four Burch Street. Thank you, Madam Chair and the members of the planning board. I really appreciate the opportunity for some comments. So I respectfully ask that you consider to keep the restrictions as part of this warrant article. But eliminate the addition of motel and hotel as a possibility for this. Um, we've had some conversations and and Kate, you mentioned being premature. I think this is premature to be talking about. You know, uses for this land because as you've all mentioned, it's not for sale. Um, so I think that um, providing a disincentive for something that would be. You know, more cost prohibitive to Westwood tax residents is being proactive enough. And that we don't need to take this extra step by allowing a hotel or motel. We have plenty of hotels and motels and as had been mentioned before. Um, the hotel that's trying to go into University Place is going to be asked to get a TIF, to get a tax break, to get it off the ground. So I just don't know why we're we're including that right now in this warrant article and. You know, it is challenging to stay engaged, you know, you mentioned about staying engaged, like um, getting people from a neighborhood. Staying engaged, you know, um, so right here, right now, I think it's important. And I really would was hoping with all of the the comments and the petitions and the attending of meetings. That would you would strongly consider taking the hotel option off and keeping in. The restrictive pieces that would um, you know, disincentivize something that would change this from becoming. Commercial to residential tax base, which I know is um, something that's, you know, of concern. But I think that all of the um, things that would go along with having a hotel. Adjacent to a residential community and an elementary school really haven't been fleshed out. And so we have an opportunity here for you to just um, take one part of this warrant article off. And submit it as a warrant article with the uh, disincentivizing of um, you know, those other portions. So I I I really am hoping that you as a committee can can consider this as a as a possibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. All right. Um, it looks like we have another comment. Um, I'm happy to read it unless Elijah you'd prefer to.
Uh, you can read it.
All right. It is Doug Cross, one thirty five Elm Street. I'm still trying to understand why a hotel needs to be added as a use. We were told we are trying to prevent this property from becoming residential. The restrictions on beds per acre achieve this. It seems that alone without the hotel added is a win-win for the town. Uh, thank you. I it, I think that's kind of similar to what Sandra expressed. Um, we do appreciate people coming. And expressing their concerns and and their thoughts. I don't know if the board wants to discuss that option, if it's something that people want to entertain. Um, we can take a moment to do that.
If I could just make a comment before you, before you discuss that option, which I I encourage you to do, I just want to point out. Especially in Mr. Cross's comments, um, the changes that you're proposing to nursing home, uh, convalescent home. Assisted living resident, they would not prevent residential development. They make it somewhat less financially attractive by limiting the number of units that could be developed on the property. But that number of units is not, it's it's not cut down to zero. So in the case of um. Even looking outside of these two, it cuts down nursing home, it cuts down assisted living residents to say six, I believe it's seventy six. Units would be the would be the maximum. I'd have to double check that. Um, but the residential retirement community is also allowed. In the ARO zone and that too would allow seventy six units of independent housing. And as the property stands today, that's probably the most profitable form of development for that property. If someone came in to purchase it, to put seventy six units of housing on that property, so individual. Units of housing, we we know what they sell for in in Westwood these days. Um, they would be restricted for ownership by um, at least one member would have to be a senior, which would be age fifty five or older. There's quite a large market for that and there is interest. There's interest from more than one developer in doing just that. So I just want to make it clear that the changes that you're making do not fully prevent. The turnover of this property to residential use.
Thank you, Nora. Kate, I have one quick question that's related to that. Um, because now you've just made me wonder, uh, and this may not be possible, so I apologize if this is kind of an inane question, but is there a way? Because I'm thinking like when we talk about mixed use, we're with some of the Mumford stuff, there's areas where we require ground floor commercial. Is there a way to do that within the use, like for something like the assisted living or whatever? Would it make sense to think about maybe adding at least some sort of commercial requirement for that kind of development? If it's even possible to kind of shore it up in addition to anything else we do to shore it up a little bit better? I don't know if that's really just not something that's done or or just out of scope for this conversation, but.
Um, so what you would be proposing then is saying assisted living residents on ten acres or more with a maximum of five units per acre. And a first floor commercial requirement, is that? It it's not consistent with the way our zoning by law is written now. Um, that's not to say it's something you couldn't consider. Maybe, maybe you could do that. I'm not sure that would, again, lessen. Lessen the likelihood of seeing that. So you might get some commercial use, but it wouldn't stop you from getting the residential use that comes along with it.
Understood. Just a thought. Thank you, Kate. I'm sorry. Thank you for indulging me.
Yeah, thank you. Um. So so. I did want to just address that um, the reason we are talking about this now, it is not premature to talk about this um, zoning change. Now, because after uh, a property has um, been been put on for sale, whenever that should happen in the future. Then it's too late. So uh, doing it now is the is in fact the right time. And this board has had very thoughtful um, considerations for across several meetings about what we can and cannot do. What we think is going to be in the best interest of of the town and of the the community. So so I I just want to say, you know, I I'm I'm open to um, other suggestions. But I believe that our deliberations thus far have brought us to the best possible change we can make for this property. Um, and and I just want to say, I appreciate that you're engaged in in this project now. But but, you know, we have been on this board, several of us have been on this board for three, four years. And every project that comes before us is in someone's neighborhood. So um, so we we always want the best for the abutters, for the town. I I I feel like that needs to be said, um, because because I'm I'm hearing your concerns. And maybe you think that we are not concerned with what you're concerned with. As as Josh said, you know, he's he's noticing that a significant pain point for the neighbors is. Is the traffic and um, but without a project before us, we can't really address specifics, so. I really do appreciate that you're engaged. I encourage you to stay engaged, but also um. Understand my, you know, this property is a commercial property. So we're just talking about um, planning for, you know, it's very likely this property eventually sometime in the future will be for sale. And what do we want? What what zoning do we want at that time? I I really do appreciate it. And I believe that the other people who live in Westwood are my neighbors, so um, I I'm not trying to make life hard for anybody. That's not why I sought this position. So I just want to say that and um, and thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Kate. Phil.
Hi, Nora. Um, just taking up Ellen's suggestion, I I was taking. And I'm just, uh, I know it's late in the process, but how difficult would it be to, because I was looking at it. And it seems like we could on Ellen's suggestion on having the first floor being. Commercial and that might mitigate some of the commercial to residential, if it did occur, impact on the town. I know we're late down the down the process of where we're doing it, but I'm a little curious just to see, just to be. And had not thought of that that as an option before. Uh, are we able to do it or is it kind of uh, to eleventh hour?
So I don't think it's the eleventh hour that's the issue. I think I, we'd want to consult council before we made a change like. I would say that the FMUOD section of the by law is where we have the ability to impose multiple uses in a single building. In the principal uses table, we, I don't think that we have that ability because it's not us, our determination of what is the principal use. So if someone wanted to put in an assisted living facility as the principal use, I'm not sure you can say that that could only be the principal use. If there was also a a ground floor residential um, dual principal use. I'm not, I'm not sure that works in the principal use section. I do think that can be addressed if the board is interested in going forward with the multiple. Um, multiple use FMUOD district. Um, that that would come into play there because then the planning board would have the ability to decide whether it would consider. A project that did not have a multiple.
I would be curious if you could check with town council and see if you could circulate some language. Because I do think that that actually is an excellent suggestion now that I, I and I was looking at the language and I was saying that actually. Could possibly work, so. My two cents.
Thank you, Phil and Nora. Josh.
Um, yeah, to to be frank, um. I I I have no problem discussing this being zoned as an FMUOD, but like that's not what this article is. Either we need to withdraw the article in our consideration if there is now trepidation around this, or we put it to a vote. Like I I think we're ideating over a completely different topic here. And again, one that I I actually thought to to the contrary, we didn't want to do when we're talking about multi-use. Uh, multi-family zoning, because that's exactly what this conversation was sort of. Uh, a surrounding with the first floor commercial, multi-family above it. So. I'd love to have that conversation. I think it's a good parcel. I think there's headwinds, of course, if it was a FMUOD and. You know, multi-family, a- a- all the consternation we've heard around that in other places, but like that's not what we're talking about right now, so. I I don't know, i- it feels. Like we're sort of running in circles. Either we want to move forward with this article or we we pull it. I don't know.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I guess, and I I see Kate and Phil. I guess what I'm struggling with is, you know, I I understand the idea of incentivizing. But I've heard a lot about the concern about losing the commercial tax revenue and and I still feel that. That's why I kind of brought this up in the, whatever it was, one of our meetings about like what can we do about what's already allowed? Because I I love the idea that like incentivizing someone is, I care, it's a nice thing, but it doesn't prevent someone from building the thing that I'm hearing. We don't want to happen. So that's kind of why I brought it in and if if we need to do that part or do more of that in a subsequent. Year or article or whatever, I totally get that. I just feel like. I've heard there's a very specific problem we're trying to solve and I just was trying to make sure we're solving the whole problem and not. And I just was trying to make sure we're solving the whole problem and not just part of it. So, but to your point, I hear exactly what you're saying. So I just, I didn't mean to jump in front, but since I feel like I'm kind of the one who started taking us that way, I just kind of wanted to explain why. Um, but I don't want us to do, to bite off more than we should at this time. But I'm just thinking like, I don't, I don't know that we solved the whole problem with just adding one piece. But that might be what we sh- can do at this point in time, but I think there's still work to do. And if that needs to be done at a different time, I totally understand. Um, and I'm not sure whether Kate or Phil had their hand up first. Kate, thank you.
Thank you. Um, so my first question is kind of a joke question. Is it within a half a mile of the train station?
It is. So within a half a mile of the Dedham Corporate Center and it may be in a half a mile of Islington as well.
Uh, to Josh's point, I think it might be, uh, a useful exercise to look back at our discussions about whether or not to include this parcel. And, um, and revisit the thinking of the planning board at that time. Because, you know, we had excellent reasons to not include this parcel at that time. Pardon me. Um, but my, my other thought, speaking very frankly, Madam Chair, is I think that any development of this parcel will be met with exactly uh, uh, the same, um, concerns or level of concern with different names. I, I think they're wonderful, wonderful neighborhood, a very active abutters. And no matter what changes are going to be happening in that area to a business, commercial piece of property, we will be hearing from residents. So a, and, um, so, so the job of this board is to plan. We, we will not be doing our job as a board if we don't plan for the possibility of a change of hands in this property and determine what is best for the town when that eventual, eventuality occurs. And, and I, I know that, that we're hearing from residents for sure and we will, they're going to watch like hawks to make sure that we get the best possible outcome when this property change, changes hands, and they should. But, um, but if, if this plan, if this board has been, received the suggestion that this is a good time to plan appropriate zoning for this property, it is our job to do that until that job is complete. So, um, so I appreciate Josh's point and whatever we choose to do, we are a board. I, I'm, I'm fine. Whatever we choose to do, but that is our job. So, um, and gosh, I'm glad we're not going longer. I'm like all fired up. I'm sorry. Um, I'm very glad to be here. I'm glad we are en- engaged people discussing this with, um, good intentions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Phil.
Um, I had deja vu all, all over again when Josh made his comment because we did, we did have these discussions and, um, it, it, it may need to be a two-step process, meaning we have what we have. And I'm supportive of what we have discussed at length for multiple meetings. Um, and, um, it's, it's always easy sometimes that we did that before, uh, to kind of go back to another discussion. And Josh's point is well taken. So, um, I'm okay with and supportive of, you know, kind of getting closure on this for tonight and moving forward.
Thank you. Sean.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I appreciate the very robust discussion from my colleagues. Wanted to make one quick comment that I think will help any members of the public looking at this, because I think there are some facts that are very evident to all of us on this board that are not always a hundred percent clear when we're having this conversation in front of other audiences. So, um, Doug, appreciate your question earlier here in the call about, you know, whether even adding the hotel use is, is necessary here if, if we've already added in some language that can, you know, restrict if not, you know, won't entirely prevent residential use, but makes it less commercially feasible. I think the crux of kind of this whole question is, is I think the planning board's desire to at least be mind, a- and the town's desire to be mindful of the tax base, uh, in the town. And, um, I think it was sort of the genesis of this conversation too. The potential of adding a hotel use is attractive, uh, from a tax-based perspective. I recognize there are questions about whether a TIF, um, or even the application of TIF to other projects in town might diminish that. But a- at the very least with hotels, for example, and, and restaurants as well, you not only get the commercial tax base, which is taxed at a higher rate, but you also get the hotel and meals tax on top of it. So it's attractive from an economic development standpoint when we're thinking about how many big capital projects like the fire station and whether it's potential school projects or other big capital needs that come online down, down the line. It's attractive to be, to be thinking about, how can we actually make certain properties more valuable than they are now? And admittedly, like administrative research office space, offices just aren't hot at this moment. And even that Meditech property, uh, I, I believe it's been sitting vacant for some time. So it's not actually being kind of used, um, to, to, to sort of best and, and highest use is sort of a vacant commercial space, which is why it's a candidate for something to do with it. So I think that's what we have to think about as a planning board. I'm not saying that there are any right or wrong answers in this, you know, we might have a robust discussion at the end of the day. Or we might even bring in an article to town meeting and the town says yes or no, we, we do or we don't want this. And I think that's a great forum for discussing these issues out in the open. But in terms of the genesis of why even introduce a hotel into the conversation, for example, I think it comes down to those, those tax-based issues. So that doesn't necessarily mitigate concerns from the neighborhood. I understand, um, concerns around that. But that's, I'm, I'm trying to think about that out loud and I just wanted to articulate that being the crux of the issue for anyone listening. So you know why it's, it's getting thought about and talked about in the way it is.
Thank you, Sean. Josh.
Sorry, I promised last time. Um, question for Nora. Um, wh- what is the, the defined difference between a motel and a hotel? Just curious.
I don't believe, I'll, I'll check our bylaw, but I don't think we, we differentiate between the two.
But we're saying that this is going to be zoned for both motel and hotel uses.
Either one, yes.
Okay. Cause when I think motel, I obviously think like some friends that we might have over near a gas station in a certain pound of town. But I don't want to see.
So I, I can read you, I can read you the definition of the bylaw. We have motel or hotel as a single definition. So people think of them in your mind, you have an opinion, but we define them as the same thing. And either one would be a building or buildings intended and designed for transient overnight or extended occupancy divided into separate units within the same building with or without a public dining facility. If such hotel or motel has independent cooking facilities, such unit shall not be occupied by any guest for more than four continuous months, nor may the guest reoccupy any unit within thirty days of a continuous four-month stay, nor may the guest stay more than six months in a calendar year. No occupant of such hotel or motel may claim residency at such location.
Cool. Thank you so much. And, um, do we feel that we are sufficiently, um, not to you anymore, Nora, I just really wanted to understand the difference between motel, but to the rest of the board? To really put this to bed, would we like to say, to take a motion to remove the hotel motel use from the ARO? And we can either vote it up or vote it down? Cause I've heard everybody say like, I, I'm sort of waffling and the public sentiment. So either we're aligned here or we take a vote and we move forward. Like, I, I think that's the cleanest way. So either we take a vote or we're all in favor and we move forward. Thumbs up, thumbs down. We good?
I would go for a sense of the, whether we support it or not as it exists. I think that's what Josh is saying and.
Yeah.
Right.
I, I'll throw mine out there. I, yeah, take a poll. I would support it.
Yeah, I think the board sounds like a good idea.
I would support the addition that Nora is including of the hotel and motel.
That's what I. Looks like I've, I've heard from Kate, Phil, Josh, Sean.
I'm supportive, um, as long as, you know, I think we've talked other issues tonight, like buffers and other things. And, and I think there's some areas of the bylaw not addressable this year, but I'd like for us to continue looking at those and looking at some of the optionality going forward. But I'm supportive for now.
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to echo what Sean said and add to the, the buffer stuff. I, I think there's more to do here. I understand we can't do it all, but I think, I still feel like for me, we're not solving the problem of we do not want to see this parcel slip into a residential, full residential use that would then remove it from the tax bracket. So I, I, I understand, I'm okay with trying to incentivize, but I still would like to do something in the future that is a little bit more restrictive on the residential uses. If that's truly what we're trying to do, I think there's more to do there. So I, I would like, I'm just putting in a, a plea for the board to not, not to abandon that discussion after the fact. But I understand that's not part of now, we're doing what we can. But I, I'm just going to express that I think we should, we should do that. Um, because I am hearing loud and clear from town administration that that, and, and from Nora and from our staff, that that is a, a real concern. So I want to make sure we're doing that, you know, some more targeted work on that and not just saying like, this is what we can do, but really clearly this is what we don't want to happen in that zone. Um, I saw Elijah and then Kate.
Uh, yes, I just wanted to clarify for, um, there's public comment saying that, um, they want to come for the board, the board voted that this is just like a temperature check and there's still going to be another opportunity by, um, March eighteenth to finalize our.
Right. We have one more meeting and, and the planning or, and the FinCon.
FinCon.
Public hearing as well. So really two more meetings on this.
And you would really have to have your final document voted on, on March eighteenth to go into the FinCon and discuss with them on March twenty-fifth. That meeting is intended to get a vote of the FinCon.
Yes, okay.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for addressing that as well. I do see this public comment. I'll come, uh, uh, an additional. I'll come back to that after Kate.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Chair, I did just want to say, I also think that this is a really good lot for a hotel. If I didn't think it would be a great lot for a hotel, I would not be supporting this change. So it isn't for me, it isn't just about the tax base. Having a hotel, uh, at that location in town provides work. Like there's all kinds of benefits to adding this use to that lot. It isn't, it isn't just about the tax piece for me. And so, um, you know, and I, quick reminder, it is a commercial property where, where, where we're not changing something into a commercial property. Um, so I, I just want to be very clear. It has been commercial property the entire time that I have lived in this town for, I don't know how many decades, it has been a commercial property. So, um, and the, the traffic, I just want to say this, the traffic for this town, um, increased traffic from Waze and, you know, ninety-five, there's, there's so much, it's a terrific location for, um, for hotels, you know, traffic not coming through town, just that first exit. It's, um, just that, the first, um, entry point. I think it's a great location or I would not be supporting it. So I, I really wanted to emphasize that and I think that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Phil, did I see your hand?
Uh, just briefly, and then I'll stop talking. Um, I actually think the traffic might be mitigated by the hotel use because of the proximity to the highway, which might be a, uh, funnel to take some of that traffic as compared to bringing it into the town. It actually might take it away from the town going onto the highway. And that was just my comment. I've talked too much though, so.
No, thank you. Uh, I, I, I think everybody should be sharing their thoughts because this is kind of a, I don't want to say it's a complicated issue, but it's an issue that's generated a lot of conversation, a lot of concern, a lot of interest. So I, again, now is the time to be having these conversations. So I appreciate everybody's insights. Um, anything else from board members? Cause I do see, um, it looks like we have another request to speak. I'm not seeing any other board members' hands. So if we can enable Sandbit to speak again.
Hi, Sandra Castellini. Um, thanks so much for your thoughtful discussion. I have actually seen firsthand, um, how everybody on the board contributes. And there's a lot of thoughtful discussion. I think it really kind of boils down to this. Um, we did purchase our homes next to this commercial property and the ARO district allows a variety of uses that we were all well aware of, you know, in purchasing our property. But one of those uses was not a hotel. And so now because the town needs money, they want to change the zoning to allow for a hotel. And that's where I think there has to be some consideration. As much as you may individually feel like it's a great location for a hotel, it was not zoned for hotel when anyone purchased their property. Um, and now making that change, I think has a, has a big effect on the neighborhood. Again, on a property that, you know, is not for sale yet. So, um, that's my last comment. I, I appreciate your, your thoughtful discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. All right, I'll give it another moment for public comment on this proposed article five. We only have a couple more. Um, all right, I'm not seeing any other comments, nor am I seeing any additional hands raised. So with that, I will move on to proposed article six, housekeeping amendments. Any comments, questions from board members on the proposed housekeeping amendments? Not seeing any. And I'll open it up for public comment on proposed article six, housekeeping amendments. Please raise your hand or use the Q and A. All right, I am not seeing any. And if there's no objections, I'll move on to proposed article seven, amendments to major business development, MBD. Any questions, comments, discussion amongst board members on that proposed article? Sean.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair. Just a question for staff. With the, with the MBD removal, I just remember one or two peripheral issues related to how the approval process might change for a few things that just came up in, in the course of the discussion on this. I recall that neither of them really rose to the level of being particularly large issues. But is there anything we need to, any more red flags we need to be aware of? Uh, if, if we've had any more time to, to think on this or will we be, you know, pretty good moving forward with this?
Uh, I think the biggest issue, uh, would be just having to renumber, um, the zoning bylaw. But, uh, there aren't any issues that we have uncovered with removing it.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns about proposed article seven? All right, then at this time I'd open up the floor to public participation, public comment on proposed article seven. Please feel free to raise your hand or enter your question in the Q and A. Full name and address for the record, please. I am not seeing any. I'll put out one more call for, um, discussion amongst board members on any of the proposed articles for the Springtown meeting. All right. And one last call for public participation, public comment on proposed articles. I am not seeing any. So at this time I will, uh, close public comment. And I believe there's nothing else aside from taking a motion to continue unless staff tells me otherwise.
Right. I move that the planning board continue the public hearing for consideration of proposed zoning bylaw amendment warrant articles to a remote meeting of the planning board on Tuesday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five via Zoom, where a Zoom link and associated call-in numbers will be provided on the town's calendar on the homepage at westwoodma.gov.
Second. I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? See, and then I'll take roll call. Josh. You were muted. Sorry.
Aye. Maybe.
Thank you. Phil.
Aye.
Kate.
Aye.
Sean.
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Motion carries. Our public hearing is continued. All right. Then our next agenda item, uh, item number five is review of draft meeting minutes from February. Review of draft meeting minutes from February eleventh, twenty twenty-five and February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Did everyone have a chance to review? Elijah, yes?
Uh, yes, uh, so I just wanted to, I guess, uh. Reamble, uh, so the, I did include the uh, February twenty-fifth, uh, in the event that we were able to get. It out to the board in time. I realize I sent it earlier today, so if the board isn't able to, I just, uh, you know. We can uh take it up at the next meeting.
Thank you. I guess that should be my first question is, did folks get a chance to review the minutes for February twenty? Was there anyone that feels?
I was not able to, but. Don't want to deny other.
I'm okay with them, uh, or if we need to continue the minutes, that's okay too.
Let's just review next.
Yeah, I I think it's uh best practice that everyone's had ample time to review. So, uh, all right, so we will. We will, um. Take action on the minutes from February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. Did folks have time to take a look at those? And did anyone have any proposed changes or comments on the minutes from February eleventh? All right, uh, then I would entertain a motion.
I moved that the planning board approve the minutes for the meeting of February eleventh, twenty twenty-five as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing that I'll take roll call, Kate.
I.
Phil.
I.
Sean.
I.
Josh.
Uh, abstain.
Thank you, and I vote I as well. The motion carries and those meaning minutes are accepted as written. Do we need to make any kind of motion to defer action on the meeting minutes for the twenty-fifth or are we okay just?
We're okay.
I was like, I always like to double check. All right, um, then our next agenda item is number five, agency committee updates. Has anyone attended any meetings from any other groups we are members of that they would like to share on?
Just I want to. State my apologies to the Ped Bike, um, group. I was sick last week and wasn't able to get to our meeting.
Understood. I'm glad you're feeling better. I have not been to any other uh meetings, so I have nothing to share. Uh, anybody else? All right.
I'll I'll make a quick note about the three rivers in a local council. They are making an effort to coordinate a fair housing training provided through the citizens. Sure, citizen trainer planning collaborative. I can't remember what CTPC sound stands for. That I I was originally scheduled for this Thursday, but has been rescheduled. So I will keep you all appraised of date. Um, Amanda did a fabulous training for us, so we may feel all set, but if if any has an interest, if anyone has an interest in engaging with. I think it's up to two representatives from each town, each of the fourteen towns in the region can go. So if you have an interest in engaging with some of your. Uh, peers and and some of the other towns and kind of being in that learning environment together, it should be a good opportunity to join.
Thank you. Yeah, I saw the email that that was being rescheduled, so hopefully that will come back. I was pretty excited to see that they were offering. Uh, all right, anything else? Not seeing everybody shaking their heads. So with that. I will move on to. Uh, sorry, agenda item miscellaneous updates, general miscellaneous updates and administrative items. So I'll turn it over to staff.
Uh, yes, so, uh, an update on the design review or rather design guidelines. Uh, task force, the um, application period closed on the twenty-eighth. We did get uh seven applicants altogether. Um, so, uh, I will be sending that out to the board ahead of the March eighteenth meeting. Where I will then be also in um inviting those uh applicants to attend uh the board meeting and have the board. Uh, review to uh. Take a motion to establish the the task force.
Excellent. That's a good response. Thank you. All right, any other um updates from staff? All right, uh, then our next agenda item is upcoming meetings. We have upcoming board meetings on March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. April eighth, twenty twenty-five, May sixth, twenty twenty-five, and our Fin- Finance and Warrant Commission. Article sponsors meeting are March twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, if needed, twenty twenty-five, and then April twenty-eight, twenty twenty-five. Lots to do over the next couple of months. All right, um, well, that is the end of our agenda, so if nobody has anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to close?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on adjournments? Seeing them, I'll take roll call, Kate.
I.
Josh.
I.
Sean.
I.
Phil.
And I say I as well.
I vote I as well. Thank you all. Um, enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thanks so much.
Have a good night, everybody.